Good evening, everyone. It's six o'clock and it's time to call to order the meeting of the Gallatin City Council for October 16th, 2018. We'll begin this meeting like we do every meeting with invocation and the pledge of allegiance. Councilman Mayberry is going to offer our invocation and then Councilwoman Love will lead us in the pledge. If you'll stand with me, please.
Shall we pray? Great God in heaven, how great you truly are, the giver of all good and perfect things. We come to you tonight in prayer, thanking you for all the many wonderful blessings and bountiful blessings that you bestow on each and every one of us because of your love. And heavenly Father, we ask thee to bless our town, our state, and our nation. And may we look to you for your wisdom and your guidance and your light. And heavenly Father, we ask thee to bless each and every one here in attendance tonight and those watching and those throughout our community. And heavenly Father, we thank thee for the agenda that we have tonight. And as we deliberate on these items, heavenly Father, that we would do so in a manner well-pleasing to thee and that we would use your wisdom and impart it to us to make the decisions that are in the best interest of all and of this community. All these things we ask and pray in the blessed name of Jesus the cross. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Kettrell, if you would call the roll for us, please. Vice Mayor Overton.
Present.
Mr. Alexander. I thought he was here. Okay. Mr. Camp.
Present.
Mr. Fennell.
Here.
Mr. Hayes.
Present.
Ms. Love.
Here.
Mr. Mayberry.
Here.
We have a quorum. Thank you, Ms. Kettrell. We have no minutes provided this evening, so we will move on to public recognition on agenda-related items. This is the time of the meeting where if there is an item on the agenda of concern to you that you would like to address, you may come forward, introduce yourself, give us your address, and then speak to your concern. There will also be a period at the end of the meeting for you to comment on items that are not on this evening's agenda. But at this point, we will declare recognition on agenda-related items open, and you may come forward.
Shannon Rogers, 151 Jocelyn Avenue, Gallatin, Tennessee. I'm here again to speak to the Randys Record Shop. I'm really not sure what to call it anymore. A project, we'll say. It's a project for you and it's a project for us, too. We've made an awful lot of progress. We've gotten the engineer to go down and we've given a letter to the city on that respect. We have done all the things we've been asked to do. We believe that we have met the letter of the ordinance and the letter of the building code. Mr. Charles Smith, the owner of this building, has made a choice. He chooses to rebuild this building, to restore it. And that is within your ordinance and within the codes. What we need now is the time it will take for us to go through that process. And I think most of you know, having been with the city for a while, the biggest time element within that is working with your staff and going through the different steps that we have to take in order to get to where we can restore the building. This one has a couple of caveats that others don't have. We have the historic thing that we're working with. We've reviewed that in the past couple of days. Feel like that that's something that we can accomplish without too much trouble. But it does take time for all of these things to happen. The building as it sits right now can be monitored on an ongoing basis. The engineer asks it to be looked at once a week. I can assure you it will be looked at every day, but we will say once a week to meet that request that he has made. The city is welcome to look at it as the rest of us are. No one is going inside that fence or inside the adjacent property that's up against the original Randys building, where the tattoo parlor was. There are no people down there. There, again, we've met the requirements of your ordinance and the building code. And then we've made the choice. Either we tear it down or we fix it. We choose to fix it. All we need is the time to get that taken care of. And that building can sit there in the condition that it's in for an indefinite period of time that no one, no engineer, no architect, or anyone else can say. We will monitor the building because all the damage that happens to the building, more deterioration and stuff, is just more money we have to put into the building to get it fixed. And we would hope be able to move into that process pretty quick. We do know that some of the things we'll have to do for the city will not happen pretty quick. It's going to take several months for us to go through this process. That is your process, not ours. And we just ask that the city council take that into consideration as we look at this docket item near the end of the program. Do we have any questions?
I mean, questions should really come under the agenda item rather than during public comment.
Okay. We will stay here until then. Thank you.
Item number nine, and it's the dangerous building hearing. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening under public recognition, you may come forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will declare public recognition on agenda-related items closed. Moving now to mayor's comments. I will begin tonight with a special recognition and a proclamation. I'm going to ask that Ms. Diana Diaz join me at the podium, please, and her family.
You all, the lady that we're recognizing this evening has more than 30 years of service to the American Cancer Society. We actually became aware of her service during the recent Relay for Life, and I'd met her in years past, and we had learned about her exemplary service from Ms. Goslin from the Cancer Society. If you'd like to join us, you may. And Jeff will be happy to take a picture if you like. But so appreciative of what she's done with her volunteer hours serving a very important cause. And in speaking to her before the meeting tonight, it was just really touching to me that she says, "Oh, I'm happy for the recognition." Anything that brings more awareness to the cause. And so that just speaks to her commitment to helping fight cancer and help those who suffer from cancer. So it's my honor to share and to present this proclamation. I'll read it for you all now. It says, "Whereas Diana Diaz is a local nurse and resident of Gallatin, Tennessee, and whereas she has dedicated more than 30 years of service to the American Cancer Society as a volunteer leader at national, regional, and division levels, and whereas Ms. Diaz started as a local volunteer speaker, her legacy encompasses everything from advocacy in American Cancer Society's Cancer Prevention Study III to hope-lodge capital campaigns and community development initiatives, and whereas she has been involved with more than 22 boards and committees throughout her volunteer tenure, and whereas Ms. Diaz is a member of the National Volunteer Training Team and chair of the Volunteer Product Council for volunteer engagement, she helped shape and support the launch, transition, and implementation of the new volunteer leadership model recognized by the American Cancer Society, and whereas Ms. Diaz is known by many as an extraordinary volunteer role model and promotes positive change for both volunteers and staff during times of uncertainty and transition, and whereas she is one of two American Cancer Society volunteers in the U.S. to be honored with the 2019 Volunteer Leadership Award in recognition of distinguished service and leadership at the national level. Therefore, I, Paige Brown, Mayor of Gallatin, do hereby honor and recognize Diana Diaz for her dedication and selfless service and ask all citizens to join in celebration of her achievements." Truly remarkable what you've done, and we are so grateful and we are so honored that you represent Gallatin in what you've done, too. So ladies and gentlemen, let's give Ms. Diaz a round of applause, please. And would you like to say anything?
Just one quick thing. Mayor Brown, you're so right about the awareness piece. I firmly believe in that. But I just would encourage people to volunteer, whatever your passion is, because you always get back more than you put in, and that's what I've found over the 33 years of volunteering with the American Cancer Society, so.
This is Ms. Jenny Goslin from the American Cancer Society.
Hi. I just wanted to say, we are so grateful that we have volunteers like Diana who take their time and effort to help to bring awareness to what we're doing and help to raise funds that are needed to help those in our community that have been affected by cancer. And we are so grateful that you invited us here today to honor this wonderful woman. Thank you.
All right. Back to mayor's comments. I do want to say a thank you to all of the department heads, all of the council, and everyone actually who attended the State of the City yesterday. We did have a great turnout and really appreciated the help from our department heads. Special shout-out to Jeff Hinchell because he was the one that put together the presentation, the pretty part of it. So we're very grateful for his work as well. And it was a fun day. And it was, for those of you who don't know, we had the opportunity to present it twice. We did it once during the chamber luncheon, as we always have, but we also had a second opportunity and were able to do it last night at Volunteer State Community College. And it was a great opportunity. And it was followed by a candidate forum. And so, big thanks for that piece of it, to the Gallatin News and Volunteer State Community College for hosting us and for sponsoring that candidate forum. I think it was a very informative evening on many fronts. Even Congressman Diane Black was with us last evening, giving a congressional update. So I want to tell you about a couple of things coming up. First on my list, and probably most importantly, is David Brown's birthday, and that's going to be this Thursday, the 18th, so wish him a happy birthday. There's also on Thursday, a town hall meeting being hosted by Mid-Cumberland. It's going to be at the First United Methodist Church, and it's about, they want feedback from the community on what the needs are, and that begins at 5:00 p.m. This Friday, Volunteer State Community College is having their groundbreaking for the Whorf Science and Math Building renovation. So if you'd like to attend that, it's at 11:00 a.m. This Saturday is Papalooza. It's going to be at Triple Creek Park. It is the inaugural Papalooza for all your four-legged friends. It's the pet festival with a fun walk, a pup strut, a costume contest, and how many vendors did you say?
Over 30.
Over 30 vendors are going to be out there. And that is going to start at 10:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. So that's at Triple Creek Park, and I think it's a really fun event and a good opportunity to kind of grow opportunities for pets and their owners in the city of Gallatin. So we're glad to do that. Next Tuesday is the 50-year celebration for the Rehabilitation Center out on Union School Road. They've been here for 50 years, and so that certainly bears recognition. I'm going to jump ahead to the 27th because we won't actually be online or on television between now and then, but on the 27th, there is a hazardous waste collection. It happens once a year, every year, and it's Volunteer State, 9:00 a.m. until 2:00 p.m. There's also the drug take-back on that day, and there's going to be various locations, mostly pharmacies throughout our city, where you can drop off expired or unused or excess drugs, because as you know, you don't want them kept laying around your home. And then on Sunday, the 28th, it's going to be the pumpkin splash at the Gallatin Civic Center. Of course, for those who are anxiously awaiting trick-or-treating on the square, will happen on the 31st. It will be from 10 until 2 for school-aged children. And I think that's all this evening under mayor's comments. I will move on into the regular agenda, and item number one is second reading on ordinance 01809-48, and Councilman Hayes is recognized for that.
Yeah, this is an ordinance of the city of Gallatin, Tennessee, approving an amendment to the Fairview Plantation Phase 19 preliminary master development plan for a 2.87 acre lot located south of Nashville Pike and west of Plantation Boulevard. Authorizing the amendment to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances providing for severability and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Hayes, seconds all around. Was that you, Councilman Alexander, or Councilman Fennell? All right. Motion by Councilman Hayes, second by Councilman Fennell. Is there any discussion? Okay, this is second reading on ordinance 01809-48. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number two is first reading on ordinance 01809-47, and Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order, City of Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning 4.77 acre parcel from R-40 low-density residential district to MRO multiple residential and office district, improving the preliminary master development plan for Nichols Place, located south of Nichols Lane and east of proposed Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard extension. Authorized revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinance and providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01809-47. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, is that six in favor and one opposed? Okay, thank you very much. Item number three is first reading on ordinance 01810-51. Vice Mayor Overton.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order, City of Gallatin, Summit County, Tennessee, rezoning two lots comprised approximately .59 acres from R-15 medium-density residential district to R-10 medium-density residential district, located south of Stanley Drive and east of Clear Lake Meadows Boulevard. Authorized revision to be indicated on official zoning atlas, repealing conflict of ordinance and providing for severability and providing for an effective date, and I so move.
Have a motion by Vice Mayor Overton, a second by Councilman Camp. Is that right? Okay. Is there any discussion? This is first reading on ordinance 01810-51. All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item number four is first reading on 01810-52. Councilman Fennell.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an order, City of Gallatin, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Gallatin, all-street parking, loading regulations, and amending Article 15 Administration and Enforcement Authorized Revision to be made to the zoning ordinance, repealing conflicted ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. I so move.
And we have a motion by Councilman Fennell, a second by Councilwoman Love, which opens it for discussion. I did look at this. It appears to me that all of the, what we discussed last week in the last work session is there as we requested, so no amendment.
So it's one-to-one. Go ahead.
Yeah, one-to-one hundred for the one specific area you were concerned about. Yeah. Any other discussion on this?
I do. Is Rob here? He wanted to explain something to us tonight, so I'm going to give him an opportunity to do that, please.
Robert Kalis, Assistant City Planner. Thank you, Mr. Overton. Mr. McCord is out of the country, and so we talked about this. The only thing that he was requesting is, you know, concerned not so much on the minimum parking, the one per 100, but he wanted me to explain, he wanted a maximum amount, say one per 75 or whatever. But what I like to explain is that even with the minimum, and even if you keep the max the same, people can still provide as much parking as they want. But what we have in our ordinance is anything over the maximum, then they would have to do like pervious pavement or some type of mitigation toward stormwater. So with the minimum max, up to the max, then, you know, they could actually put asphalt parking, you know. Say if the minimum is 100, and if you come up with a maximum of 200, they can do all asphalt parking or impervious pavement. But once you get over that maximum, 200, if you wanted to provide more, you would have to provide pervious pavers or some type of mitigation for stormwater. So that is why Mr. McCord just wanted some other number for the max.
Yeah, I had told him last week that I thought that we should have a higher maximum number, and I'm not opposed at all to that 75 for the maximum.
Yeah, we need a maximum because you're going to pin.
Right now, it's, right now, the maximum is the same as the minimum, and I just see some type restaurants where they may have a different formula based on the kind of service that they offer, and therefore they may want a little additional parking. I think we should have that opportunity there for them.
What's your recommendation?
75.
75?
Yes.
I'll make an amendment to.
Second.
So we have an amendment on the table by Councilman Hayes to change the maximum on the restaurant only or on the other one?
That was his only concern.
Okay, on the restaurant only. On the restaurant only, okay with you? Okay. So amendment by Councilman Hayes to change the maximum to one per 75 square foot. Second by Councilman Camp. Okay, Vice Mayor Overton, thank you. Sorry, my left ear is apparently not working tonight. So, second by Vice Mayor Overton. Is there any discussion at this time on the amendment?
So that means anything over the maximum will be, they would have to put down a pervious...
Or some type of stormwater mitigation, yes.
I know what you're talking about. Yes, yeah, I'm okay.
Anyone else? Okay, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Amendment does pass unanimously, taking us back to the regular motion. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01810-52. Voting on it as amended. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. Does pass unanimously. Item five is first reading on ordinance 01810-53. Councilman Mayberry.
Yes, ma'am. This is an ordinance of the City of Gallatin, Tennessee, to rezonate 12 lots comprising of 1.30 plus or minus acres from the MRO multiple residential office district to the PGC planned general commercial district with a preliminary master development plan for wash-and-roll car wash located south of Nashville Pike and east of Oscar Smith Drive, which is where Volunteer State Bank is presently being operated, authorizing the revision to be indicated on the official zoning atlas, repealing conflicting ordinances, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date. Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilman Mayberry, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion?
Have we seen any pictures of this car wash?
Nope.
Did it plannin'?
In her packet last week, yep.
In her packet last week?
Yeah, they were there.
Represent this here.
Okay. It'll be in there for the second reading, the picture. It may be in there in this one. Okay.
I'll make a note. Mr. Mayberry wants pictures for second reading.
You're going to call it Paige's car wash.
Yeah, as the person who so frequently gets her car washed. That would, that'd be a stretch. Any further discussion on this? Okay, this is first reading on ordinance 01810-53. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
Show me abstention, ma'am.
It does pass unanimously with one abstention. Thank you. Item number six is resolution R1809-60. Councilwoman Love.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution accepting public improvements by the city of Gallatin for Cairo Estates Phase 1 and 2. I so move.
Motion by Councilwoman Love, second by Councilman Alexander. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is resolution R1809-60. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It passes unanimously. Item number seven is resolution R1810-61. Councilman Camp.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Joanne Walker to the Gallatin Health, Educational, and Housing Facilities Board. So moved.
Have a motion by Councilman Camp, a second by Councilman Hayes. Is there any discussion? This is resolution R1810-61. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, say no. It does pass unanimously. Item eight is resolution R1810-62. Councilman Alexander.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a resolution appointing Joanne Walker to the Gallatin Industry Board, and I so move. Development Board.
Motion by Councilman Alexander, second by Councilman Hayes. Any discussion? This is resolution R1810-62. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed, please say no. It is approved unanimously. Item number nine, this is the dangerous building hearing and update for 321 West Main, and I will turn it over to our attorney, Ms. Susan High-McCollie, and our building official, Mr. Chuck Stewart.
Yes, just to remind you of where we are procedurally on this matter, this board determined that the building at 321 West Main Street was an eminently dangerous building. Subsequently, there, too, you extended, you'd given them 15 days, you gave an extension for 30 days, but it was still deemed eminently dangerous. Right now, we do have that order down, and so you're here tonight to determine whether you deem this still to be an eminently dangerous building, or if it's a dangerous building, and what type order you want to put down. So I'm going to let Mr. Stewart go from there.
I placed in your, in front of you this evening, a picture taken today from the wall there. You'll see that we're about to lose four more feet on that side, but the four-by-fours won't let it go anywhere. It's just sitting there. As far as the building department, I gave you a set of the regulations out of the building code out of chapter 34. As far as I'm concerned, it's still an eminently dangerous building. The only thing we have accomplished is there's a fence put up, some four-by-four set up, and the people have been moved out of active businesses, and electricity and utilities have been disconnected.
But there's really been no changes for safety towards the building since?
I see none.
Okay.
It's not safe for anybody to work inside it, to do anything to it, you know.
Got a question. When we asked these gentlemen to have these things done to it and by the engineer's report, weren't we assuming that that would make it no longer an eminently dangerous building? weren't, weren't we assuming that that would make it no longer an eminently de- dangerous building?
Well, that's what you need to, to decide. I believe that the engineer's report, uh, that engineer said in his opinion that that would change it from eminently dangerous to dangerous. And I do have, um, I don't think, did you make copies of this for everyone, or you just provided me a copy? Mr. Rogers provided me a copy, um, from Richard Jones that's dated today, that says in his opinion, um, it has been changed from eminently dangerous to dangerous, and he would, he recommends weekly inspections to ensure the building remains free from public entrance within the established safety barrier zone, and the safety measures, uh, remain stable and intact. And he expects that the City of Gallatin will request a reevaluation at some future date for the same reason.
I'm just not sure why we insisted that these guys do these things if we weren't gonna accept it as less than eminently dangerous at that time.
And I will tell you that, that my concern is, um, at this point, there is still the eminently dangerous building ordered down, and in that order, it said that you had, you know, he only had fifteen days to do something, and we gave a thirty-day extension to that. So, that extension is now over. So, we, you, this board needs to determine how you wanna proceed, and what kind of order you wanna put down, because there are orders on file with the Register of Deeds, and, um, the public and everyone else needs to know what this board wants to do going forward with this building.
And I, I got, I mean, and Chuck, I don't doubt you at all. I mean, I don't really. I'm not a codes official, I'm not an engineer. I think it's just an unusual situation, you know, where you've got a historic building. Whether it can be saved or not, I don't know. I don't have a problem extending it for a little bit more time, but to me, they have to come up with something showing us that they're gonna be able to get the money and get this building complete. I don't wanna see it sitting here six months from now and still in the same condition or something like that. That's my thing. I don't have a problem extending it out for, you know, sixty more days. And, you know, we, we, but we've gotta see something to where they're getting money raised. They've got money, and it's, it's being worked up.
I've got a question for you. I believe Mr. Rogers said, and this was my question a minute ago from him, when he, when you were, can I bring him forward? Mr. Rogers, could you come up? Mr. Rogers, when you first started addressing us, you said that you had spoken with Charles Smith and that he wanted to restore this building. Well, I take that to mean that he's paying for the restoration. Is that not correct?
No. He wants to restore it. He can. I mean, if that's, that's his choice. At this point in time, nobody can pay for anything, because we've still got the codes process to go through here. We really can't do anything down there because of the rules and regulations that, uh, we all have to follow uh, until we get through the historic building process. And that's gonna take, uh, several months, I'm told.
Yeah, and I think there's an understanding that some kind of historic designation is gonna change our rules, and it doesn't, because we don't have an historic designation.
It makes us comply with the rules.
Right.
The rules say that if as long as we have this, as long as we have this, if this building is designated as historic structure by the city, the county, the state, or the federal government, then we, then we can move into the Building Code. Uh, the Building Code will then allow us to repair the building as it's supposed to. So, does the federal laws that govern this particular structure.
Again, I'm not a building official either, but Chuck, it's, it's about the age of the building that whether or not it gets the historic designation under Building Codes, it doesn't have anything, there is no designation that we do.
Well, you know, if you read the code I, I gave you there, even if, if it's declared historic, which I don't believe that will happen, it still has to, has to go through all the same processes. Uh, if you read on page one, there's a technically infeasible. That's where we stand in the Building Department. All the lateral bracing, which is all the parallels to the ground, are gone. Nothing there. Lateral means that wind, earthquake, anything could make it, make it collapse, okay? So, in our opinion, in the department, after I had sit down with some of my old boys that's been around for a long time, we don't think it can be repaired as is. It'd have to come down and start over again. Uh, those walls, I know that he doesn't agree with me, but we have no idea what holding those walls together, except mortar. And so, we keep, we wouldn't sign off on anything out there. Maybe an engineer might, but we would not.
Well, it's, it's about getting it rebuilt, and I think getting it rebuilt, the biggest piece of that is going to be having a plan to get the money and a pla- and a plan to get the building going, because I agree that we don't want it sitting there indefinitely with a fence around it, and obviously looking like a danger, because even with the fence around it, and this is where the imminent danger thing comes to play in my mind, that's mighty enticing to some group of little kids that sneaks out at ten o'clock at night and rides their bikes over there. I mean, that, that just is what scares me about it. Councilman, uh, Vice Mayor Overton, I'm sorry.
Susan, we have a letter from an engineer, and yet we have our building official telling us that it's still an im- imminent dangerous building, and yet we have an engineered letter saying that it's not. I have to go by the expertise of my building official. I'm just telling you that now. And until he feels comfortable with whatever's gonna happen, if they wanna redo this building, I mean, you know, I was hoping that whatever happened, that our, our codes officials would get comfortable with this thing getting off the intimate dangerous list. And, but he's telling us now that it's not. I don't feel comfortable with it until our building official can tell us that it's not. So, I wanna save the building as bad as anybody on this council wants to save it. But I also don't wanna put our city and our residents in the city in the liability that we're putting them in. That we're going against our building official and saying, "We're going to stop this. We're gonna go against what our building official's telling us." I don't feel comfortable. And I wanna save this building as bad as anybody up here does. I'm the first one that wants to save it.
Well, I think there's a discrepancy. Chuck, me, help me out here if I'm wrong, Mr. Stewart, I'm sorry. Um, you're saying it's not safe to go in there, and we know that. And, and that's why the fence and the bracing of the walls happen to remove the imminent danger of it falling on someone that was walking around the building. And, and so, the conundrum that we've created for ourselves is that now more money has been spent to shore up walls and put a fence around it, and to give, um, a lot of people working on this a hope that, you know, something can be done. And now we're saying, "Oh, well, you know, that's not good enough." And so, I'm trying to figure out, what would be the next step, Mr. Stewart, for them to make, uh, remove the imminent danger in your mind?
I think those walls have to come down. Where we are in our discussion in, in, in the department is that that fence will not stop homeless people, will not stop teenagers at night from going into that building. Those four-by-fours bracing would not stop those walls from falling if they decided to fall and just take the braces with it. Okay? So, if we had a loss of life in that building at night, weekend, when no one's around, there's nobody watching the building, going out there every day and checking on it, all we do is find someone in it, so, uh... The liability to this city is, is my responsibility that you placed on me when you, uh, picked me for this position. And I take it very serious, and I think that, uh, I'm like Mr. Overton. I don't have any desire for that building to go away, but I also don't need that liability placed on this city if something were to happen out there.
Even if there's signs communicating the warning that it's a dangerous building and no trespassing allowed?
Yeah, the sign will stop the bricks from falling.
Well, I know, but I'm, I'm talking about removing the liability.
Would it change things if somebody purchased the building and, and had an intent on repairing the building? Would that change our point of view?
No, it's the imminent danger.
I, I understand that, but...
It might speed up the process, that's the only thing it would do.
And, and, Mr. Stewart, is there, is there a way that if somebody did want to save that, that they could go in there and form it up and pour concrete on the inside of the block, like some of these new foundations they're doing on these houses that are concrete?
That would take an engineer's determination, not, not, uh...
I just see a lot of houses now that they, they have preformed stuff, and they put it with concrete. I mean, if somebody wanted to spend enough money, then something, something could be done, yeah.
Yeah, well, enough money, you can do just about anything.
But I, I, I do follow what Mr. Overton, you're saying. You know, one of my friends that I know showed up here, and one of his crew members got killed. If you remember Bill Ennis coming down here to, to kill a gas line on a service on a building, and he got tied up with Metro, and when that building fell and killed his employee, then, you know, everybody got hit for that.
That's correct.
I do understand that part of it, and, and, but, you know, the compassion of me, I, I would really like to see the guys be able to save the building. That's, that's really about all I can say.
And I agree. I think it'd be great to save it, and I, I worry now that what Chuck's is saying, I, I mean, nobody wants anybody to get hurt there. But at the same time, we, we knew what we were saying was an engineer's determination, and we told them to go ahead and go do that, and I thought that remove, I thought that was gonna remove the imminent danger. I, I think we were giving them the impression that that was.
Councilman Alexander? Mayberry?
Shannon, Chuck just said, has brand-new bracing, and I haven't, obviously, I have not been over there, I've not walked over there. I just go look over there when I drive by. Has brand-new bracing been put up on the outside? For instance, between the wall on the east and that, and I guess radar's, that yellow building? Like they do, if someone puts up a brand-new masonry wall and the mortar is still wet, they'll put up a parallel board up so high, and they'll put at forty-five or sixty-degree angle boards to keep that thing from falling either way, even on a brand-new. What have you done down there, Shannon?
We did exactly what a registered professional engineer told us to do. Uh, and it's done exactly as he said. That's the reason he's, he's looked at it a couple of times, but he got me a letter today that, in his opinion, it is not eminently dangerous. It's not gonna fall and kill somebody. The thought that, okay, somebody, homeless guy, kids playing around, somebody just curious wants to climb the fence and get over there in it, they could do the same thing to the TVA substation out here on the south side of town and get electrocuted and killed.
Don't bring it.
The, uh, these things happen all the time. We can't protect against that, this city council can't, nobody in the city can. The only way you would do that would be to go down there and take our police force and take them and surround the building and have it twenty-four-seven that way. That's not the way it works. We've done everything humanly possible to shield the public from any danger whatsoever of this building, especially imminent danger of the building. We have no intentions of any human going inside it. The instance that, uh, uh, Councilman Fennell brought up about, uh, that was brought to this council about an individual who was hurt, was not the only one, there's been many. But OSHA and TOSHA have gone through and made rules and regulations that these construction people now must follow. We know what those are. No one's gonna go in this building. The building, the walls will be reinforced and become a freestanding structure on their own under the direction of a registered professional engineer, who's already told us all we need to do is drop some rods down in them. I have met with the largest masonry contractor in this state, and they say, "Have no problem, we do this all the time." Uh, we can reinforce those walls.
How quickly can that happen?
How can we make that happen? The first thing we have...
How quickly can it happen?
Uh, can't happen very quickly, because we can't do anything on the building until we get it declared a historic structure. Uh, we're working with different entities.
I disagree that that has anything to do with it. I don't understand why you think that that has to happen first.
Because in order to take anything down inside that building, these walls need to become what they need to be. They need to be a freestanding structure. And those four walls will then establish the boundaries of Randy's Record Shop, as it always has been. Then we will take the insides out safely, where people can go in and do their job. We're not worried about the walls coming on inside. The walls are not falling to the outside, they're falling to the inside. And, yeah, they will deteriorate, and there's a chance, there's a few sections down there, will continue to fall. They're gonna fall inside. I have been around the building, on top of the roof, on the other side, into the back of the building. I don't find even gravel laying there from the deterioration that has already happened, even the roof falling in. So, irregardless to that, the public is protected, the city has no liability in that. As far as who's doing what down there, I know the building goes extremely well. I was a, uh, had the same certification he's got for twenty-five years. I also worked as an architect and an engineer for over forty-five years. I've got a pretty good handle on what we're doing down here. I'm no longer, have no longer any cert- certifications or registration, I retired those years ago. So, I know what to do. I depend on my registered professionals. The city's job is to enforce the adopted codes, which is what your building official is doing. I respect that greatly. We all have to respect the fact that we have registered professionals, architects, engineers, and other people who will be involved in this project, who are licensed by the state because of their level of education and testing way, way beyond what any building official has in this state. That's the reason the system is set up the way it is. Your building official enforces the codes, but the architects and engineers, they, they design around those codes and get within them, and they, they, they provide something that the codes don't provide. They provide that education that they have to know the formulas, to know how to figure stress and strain, to understand gravity, to understand all the things to protect the public, just as everyone else has to do.
Susan.
Now, I appreciate, uh, I'm, I'm sorry.
I was gonna ask...
I appreciate your comments, but to say that the city does not have any liability is wrong, and that's the problem that we're experiencing at this moment, because we do have an imminent dangerous, danger order that we are not enforcing, and therein lies our liability.
Correct.
Let me ask...
Councilman Hayes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Susan, let me ask you a question. If they had a insurance policy in place, would that take a little bit of liability off us?
They do.
Whereas they would be primary, and then they could come back on us, obviously.
I think they do have one in place, and it would take some off, but, I mean, we're, as long as that building's there...
Yeah.
And we have an imminent dangerous building ordered down, we're gonna have some liability.
Do y'all, do you do have an insurance policy in place?
Yeah, a million bucks, the, uh, for liability. We have a million dollars liability on the building. And that's, uh, that's just standard when you're doing construction work.
And it is, it is enforced, right?
Oh, yeah, well, she's got an insurance certificate from, uh, Mr. Holt, I think. And, uh, that will take, take that end of it off. It sounds like to me that if imminently dangerous building were just changed to dangerous building per the Building Code, then your liability would be reduced. Is that correct?
Even with a dangerous building, we're still gonna have liability.
You'll have some liability.
Right now, we have more liability, because we have an eminently dangerous building order that we're not enforcing. That's the issue at the moment.
Uh, you know, I still stay in the same place I stood before. We, we hired Mr. Stewart to be our codes man, and I'm not gonna allow, I mean, this is just me personally, any architect or any engineer come, uh, come in and speak over the city codes man that we have, and he's been standing there from day one, telling us this, this is an imminent dangerous building. We got pictures where the wall is falling in, and, and, I mean, I love Randy Record Shop. I, I go way back when I lived in Louisville, I always listened to Randy Record Shop. But, uh, I would much rather support building a brand-new building in that same spot than trying to say this unsavable building. That's just my personal opinion. And, and Mr. Stewart, I appreciate your effort, I, I appreciate you standing firm on what you're saying, and if nobody else behind you, I'm behind you a hundred percent. That's all.
Susan, is this not correct, uh, my statement that an architect and engineer does take precedence in these types of matters over a building official?
I have not researched that to know the answer to that.
I have. They do.
Sir?
Shannon, this may be redundant, but let me go through it one more time for, for my side, for my sake. Here comes the finance side. Is funding a holdup for you to get in there and do what is necessary to secure the remaining walls at this point, as of tonight?
No, our first step has to be codes. We can't do that without a building permit, and he's not going to give us a building permit unless we do certain things.
Number two. Did I understand you correctly that you were waiting to get an historical designation for that property? Is that correct?
Correct. Everyone that's looked at this, the architects, engineers, our attorneys, and everyone else that Mr. Smith has talked with, and myself, tells us that the first step we need to make is to get this building declared a historical structure by someone, the city, the county, the state, the federal government, whoever wants to step up, we're doing it. We've already started the process with the City of Galatin, and we'll be looking at some others as we go, and whoever comes first, comes first.
So it's not going, you're not looking for like a state historical site like some are, or?
That is one of the options that we have, but every time we talk with the state or we talk to the people at the Historic Register, they tell us that the place to start is with your city. This meets all the qualifications for a landmark designation. There's nothing in your ordinance for a landmark designation. So we talk with your city planner and his staff and everyone else that was involved in that, and we're looking to go with a historic district, which you do have in your ordinance. It can be that. It's just not a district. It's just one little piece of property, though, which is a little convoluted, but if that's the way the planner wants it, that's the way we'll go. It may be a little bit easier to do that than it is to go back and amend your ordinance that allows you to do a landmark designation.
Again, I do not understand that at all, because, I mean, a historic designation does not give any preservation, whether it's on a national register, or it does not give it any protection whatsoever.
Not the national registry. It doesn't give any local protection at that, unless they're willing to accept it.
And any kind of local designation, it depends on what an overlay might be, and we don't have any such overlay that would prevent any demolition. We don't have any kind of overlay, nor does the state. I think some cities probably do in some areas, but we don't have anything.
I want to ask Chuck one question. I'm sorry, Paige, go ahead.
No, no, I'm fine. Go ahead.
Maybe I'm seeing something wrong. I just, I need you to answer something for me to help clarify. Just suppose that I turn around and I bought this place.
Okay.
And then I turn around and called you up, and you knew the shape, I mean, you sent a picture here, and I've been looking at it every day, and it looks like, to me, the blocks have moved some here recently. So I just bought this building right here, and I say, Chuck, because of the chance, I want to preserve it, I want these blocks still standing. And I understand the need for the blocks to still stand for historical purposes. And I said, Chuck, I just bought this place. I'm going to start spending money right now. Can you give me some kind of permit that I can go ahead and shore these blocks up and make sure and get the peripheral walls standing in place? Would you allow me to do that if I was to come to you and you understood the situation?
Okay, let me answer it this way, on the question that was brought up there about overriding an architect or an engineer. No, a code official does not override an architect or an engineer. However, what I will do is ask for another one to compare two engineering reports or two architects, because I guarantee you, none of them see it the same. So I will ask for another one. So if you come in here and you purchase this building, I'd ask you to bring another engineer in and get a report from him as to what you could do to secure those walls so you could go on. Now, like I said, if money's no object, you can have those walls, you can bring machines in and take a look inside those walls and see exactly what's inside them.
So it's a money issue right now?
It's a money issue, and it's also, there's numerous issues with this site. Flood plane being one. The attached buildings that are attached to it, you know? And I don't want, I understand Mr. Rogers' passion here and everything, but there's a big difference between a fence around a substation and that barricade we have around that building down there. And that is our concern. We went into the old Ford dealership to do the final demo before it was tore down. There was quite a few living in there. You know, they'd gotten there with living, had a whole community living inside that building. So what goes on here at night, I'm sure Chief Bandy can probably enlighten us, but we don't know everything that happens.
We don't want our police department going in there and seeing what's living in there either.
Or fire or rescue going into that building.
Councilwoman Love?
Okay, you said that you've got a liability policy already. Would it be possible to add the city on to that?
Actually, the city is on that, aren't they, by justification of the certificate they gave you?
We don't have ownership of that building, so-
You don't have ownership, you can't do it. By giving, I think, trying to answer Councilwoman Love's question, when we give an insurance certificate to an owner or a city or whomever, next-door neighbor, that actually is us saying that you are protected from this happening under our policy, because we have the insurance to cover it. There is some things that the city attorney is referring to that she is absolutely correct. This is one of the problems we've had with this imminently dangerous thing all along, is it's hanging out there. I would like to see this council tonight rescind that. If you want to declare this a dangerous building under the building code, it certainly meets that requirement, and we accept that. And accept also the fact that the owner and those of us working with him have made the choice to renovate this building, and that will be a process that we'll all just have to go through.
Councilwoman Love?
Would it be possible to tear this building down and reuse those bricks again? Would that not be equally-
When we look at the, we've got to fall back over when we start looking at this for this historic preservation, or, it's not preservation, this is historic reconstruction. When we go into historic reconstruction, all of these things will fall under the federal requirements. Those requirements, we've gone through in great detail. And so has your city staff over in the planning office. And we think we're on the same page there. Those would preclude us from tearing those down, because then you've got something totally different. If there's anything there that we can save, the rules want us to save that, and that's what we're trying to do. It's only those four walls. Everything else there can go and should go.
Okay, my last question is for Chuck, since Chuck, you said that if somebody bought it and came in with another engineer and they agreed you would accept that, well, can these guys just come in with another engineer as it is now?
See, the question to me was, who would pay for that? I did not, I did not ask for another engineer report on this one because of funding and because of the situation. I have done it many times here, where I received an engineer's report, didn't agree with it, so I asked for another one. And that's on the customer, just provide me them, because they're the one that is the customer there, trying to do something.
I'm going to interject here, counsel, your circumstance is that you either have to remove the imminent danger or we have to move forward with demolishing the building. I mean, those are your two options, because we're in that, we're in that period where we've allowed that imminent danger to go past the allowed days, and you can't let it go, I mean, I don't think, Ms. Hamacoli, that you can let it go.
You could extend it, but, you know, our code talks about fifteen days, and then we extended it for thirty. If you have an imminently dangerous building, I don't think that's something you're going to want to, and Mr. Stewart, I'm not a codes expert. Mr. Stewart can speak more on that. I don't know that we want to continue to extend an imminently dangerous building. Do you disagree with that, Mr. Stewart?
That's correct. Okay, so nobody's flinched. You hadn't flinched from your decision, and Shannon, you hadn't flinched, you know, on your drive. So we've got an unstoppable force going against an immovable object here. Okay, Shannon can get fifty engineering reports that disagree with you, but if nothing is done differently than what you see down there, you're not going to change your position, correct?
No, sir, I'm not.
No matter what? Okay. That's pretty obvious. Shannon, in the main case, if, you know, if the money is no object, could there be additional securing of the walls, maybe? Probably, I don't know. It can't be? Can't be better secured to help this fellow, our codes director?
Security guard at night?
Decrease it. So, okay, I see. Nobody's going to flinch, so we're going to have to make that decision. Okay. Shannon, one last time. What different can we see down there? If you, if, and I'm not making this as a motion, in thirty days, what different are we going to be able to see down there in the improvement of the stability and safety of that property?
You will see, everything that is there now properly maintained is all we can do in thirty days. Your process alone, that we have to go through, through the city's process, and we will honor that and do it, even though we're trying to find ways to expedite that as best we can. Parallel things, piggyback things, that's got to go through various different planning commission. All this other stuff's got to be done. It's got, some things have got to come back through here. That'll require three readings. All of those things have to be put in place before we can spend the kind of money that we're going to be spending down there to put Randy's back in operation like it needs to be.
How much money's been raised to date? I think that would give this council-
We have earmarks of approximately $250,000 to date. And I won't go into any more detail with that. We're still working, we could get probably quite a bit more if we had a vehicle put in place, a 501(c)(3). That in itself is a process. We've started our own. We're trying to work with some local civic groups, and they have meetings that they have-
Have you incorporated yet?
That's already in the process. The lawyer's got that, passing it through now.
Boy, this is a hard decision for this council.
I'll also tell you guys this, too, because you did direct, or give them the opportunity to brace the walls and put the fence up based on Richard Jones' initial letter. And so that they've done that, now you're saying that we're going to depend on Chuck Stewart. I'm just trying to present both sides here. I'm not telling you what you should do, but-
I believe in Chuck Stewart a hundred percent. Richard's letter did say that it'd be inspected weekly, and that letter's telling me that the building could move weekly and need to look at it. It's not saying-
Well, I was talking about that first letter to him, from him, where he said this needs to happen to remove the imminent danger that it is, so-
This is just my opinion. I'll throw it out there and see if it would stick. I believe in Chuck Stewart a hundred percent. If it was not Randy's Record Shop, a long time ago, I said bulldoze it down and go on. I've got to believe in Chuck Stewart. And I do. I feel compassionate for Randy's, and, you know, I like the history of the building. I would make a motion, I'm going to make a motion, before I make that motion, Mr. Rogers, if you, it raised my eyebrows when you said you got $250,000 committed to you. I mean, that was a hard path to travel, and you made it this far. But I make a motion to extend it for forty-five days, and at forty-five days, we're going to tear it down. You have to have somebody close on the property and it be sold, I mean, bought and purchased.
May I offer one more thing? Your ordinance does not say to tear it down. Your ordinance says we have to give you a decision. We either tear it down or we repair it. And if we don't give you a decision, then you move forward. You have got your decision. Legally, we're on the high ground.
So how do I need to make my motion?
No, I don't think that's true on an imminent danger building, Susan.
Yes, it certainly is, yes. I've read the ordinance carefully.
Okay, here's the ordinance. It's section five dash two forty-seven. I'm going to read the entire ordinance to you. Imminent danger in emergency cases. In cases where it reasonably appears that there is immediate or imminent danger to the life or safety of any person, unless a dangerous building, as defined herein, is immediately repaired, vacated, or demolished, the building official shall report such facts to the city council, and the city council may and shall have the right to cause the immediate vacation, repair, or demolition of such dangerous building, unless the owner or responsible party can affect such repair or demolition within fifteen days. The cost of such emergency vacation, repair, or demolition of such dangerous building shall be collected in the same manner as provided in section two forty-five dash two forty-five.
All right, let me change my motion. I make a motion that we give them forty-five more days extension, and at the end of forty-five more days, that it would have to be up to Chuck Stewart whether or not to act upon, to see if they can make it worthy enough for Mr. Stewart's opinion.
I think your motion really needs to be related to the imminent danger position of it.
Forty-five days to make to get the building-
So you're extending the imminent danger for forty-five days? Or you're saying-
Or it's a drop dead date. That's it.
Have a motion?
I have a second.
Can you restate the motion? Just, I have to prepare the order, so I need to make sure I understand it. I'm not certain I understand it right now.
Forty-five days to make sure that the building is out of imminent danger completely, or we act upon the request of Chuck Stewart to proceed.
But there's no way it can be out. I'm sorry, I shouldn't be ordering with your motion. I apologize.
I just want to give them something. I really do.
Okay, so you want to extend the forty-five days to ensure the building is out of the imminent dangerous status?
Completely, and after that-
And here's the thing, can we get into discussion? We've got a motion in a second. Here's the thing, I mean, I see where Sean's coming from, but in that forty-five days, that gives Mr. Rogers and them some time. They might come in here and say, okay, yeah, these walls, I mean, trying to get a historical editing going, these walls might be able to come down. We might have to tear the walls down and start from scratch. But I'm saying, we can't, we can't go on six months from now with this hanging over our head. We can't do it. We've got to have something in place in forty-five days. Yeah.
You know, it's really not fair to Mr. Shannon. We're just leading them on. This building cannot be repaired. I would support it a hundred percent if you tear it down and start from scratch. I would be the first, but-
Well, Mr. Stewart even said it could be repaired.
In forty-five days-
Not forty-five days.
But that's what I'm saying. We lead them on. And we let them, in my opinion, we have led them enough. We have given ample enough time to have something done to take it out of this status, which it's in now. It's just, we're just kicking the ball down the street, kicking a can down the street.
Well, and I would believe that in forty-five days, they could excavate everything out and shore those walls up, which is what needs to be happening. I don't think it needs to be going through, trying to get us to change ordinances to-
Well, the motion, it's your motion, okay, but I'd like to ask Ms. Hamacoli. According to that ordinance, it's not my decision. Once I presented this to this council and you voted, it's your decision now, not mine any longer. All I do is come in here and tell you my opinion of the building and the status it's in, so it's not my decision any longer. It's council's decision.
So we could say it's dangerous versus imminently dangerous.
You could. That's why we're here tonight. You have a motion in a second?
I've got one thing to ask.
Okay, Vice Mayor Overton?
If this motion passes, are you guys going to be able to do what they're asking in forty-five days?
We're not the ones that control the town on this.
If he's got $250,000 that's already donated to him, couldn't he act on some of that $250,000 and go in there and have somebody shore that wall up or report or pin it?
That money is earmarked for the purchase of the property. The building can easily be fixed. What Councilman Fennell is asking for is basically, we're back to square one. He says, what needs to be done to make it no longer imminently dangerous? We have a professional engineer said do this. In fact, basically, the engineer told us to do the same thing that you guys told us to do. And you'll shore up the walls, put a fence around it, get the people out of the other side. We've done all of that. We've met those requirements, and the engineer says it is no longer imminently dangerous. Your building official says that this is your call. It's not his call. Don't put the monkey on his back. And the way it's, it's written, it is, it is up to you guys.
But my fear is, too, that there's no demonstration of any progress, because the priority should be removing the danger versus, oh, well, that's money for a purchase. I just, I, I mean, what kind of timeframe you think you're looking at? Because this city's not open, I, I mean, I, I speak for myself.
I'm told that...
Having it sitting there with the fence around it for months and months is not acceptable, I don't think.
I, I did one in the middle of Nashville, was there for two and a half years, and Metro never said anything about it. And when we restored the building, it was in worse shape than this one. That's been several years back.
With Mr. Sm-...
A smaller city.
Sorry. Would Mr. Smith not spend the money to get this shored up, since this is all dependent on him making this, on making a sale? I would think he would spend...
He has spent that money correctly. He's, he's done that already. He did exactly what y'all asked him to do. He paid for that. And that's an ongoing cost, by the way. Charlie pays, Charlie sends him a bill every month for the equipment and other stuff that he's got down there and the work that he's done that month.
We, we have a motion and a second.
We still in discussion?
Yes.
Okay. Going on memory, Susan Page, and based upon what you said about fifteen minutes ago, Paige. When we voted to give the first extension, when it was declared imminent, which is the first time we'd ever had an imminent before. We've had several dangerous buildings, which were residences primarily, and, yeah, we've given a lot of extensions. We were given extensions to the point that one time Chuck said the biggest problem he had was, was delinquent property taxes on delinquent buildings, which, boy, did that, uh, I follow up on that, got us, hopefully, I guess it got us a lot of extra paid up, actually, taxes. That's not the case on this, this one. However, did we, in the minutes, was our decision that night when we gave that first extension, was it predicated on Mr. Jones's report? And we would make our decision whether or not it was imminent or not imminent based on Mr. Jones's report as opposed to Chuck's report? Did we leave, did, is that what we did?
I think that's what you did, because remember, you had a letter initially, and you asked them for that letter.
Okay.
You asked them to get, you, you asked him to get an, a letter from an engineer to tell us what needed to be done to remove the imminent danger. Mr. Jones, and please interject if I say anything wrong. Mr. Jones sent the letter. It said that the walls need to be shored up, and a fence of whatever height need to be put, at whatever distance around the building, and that's what has been done. And so...
So we left it up to a third party. And that third party was Mr. Jones over here. And Mr. Jones came in, and he did a due diligence and a study and a written report that we, that we read. And he went item by item, and he classified it not an imminent, but a dangerous building. Is this correct?
If both things were done, and that's what he says in his letter to Susan.
So he lessened it, and we gave the perception or reality to these clients here, these people here, Johnny and Shannon, whoever, that we would base that upon that third party. Is that, and, and Susan, you were doing this?
Yes, I believe that your, your, um, motion that was followed by an order that night was to give them thirty days to accomplish the things that Mr. Jones set out in his letter. And those things were the three things that Mayor Brown just discussed that would, in his opinion, and Mr. Jones's opinion, remove the imminent dangerous, imminent danger status from the building.
Okay, so it's removed.
Well, you're gonna have, you're going, you're going to have to vote to that effect.
The reason that we're here tonight is because the order is still standing that there's an imminent danger on that building. You gave them an extension to remove the things that the professional engineer said was, uh, would help it to remove that imminent dangerous status, but that order still stands. It's still on file with the register of deeds. That's why we're here tonight.
We haven't officially removed that, but we were relying upon Mr. Jones's report. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And Mr. Jones's report has said it's not. So he has made that decision for us.
Well, his original report said if you do three things, that would remove it. And his letter today says that that, that is, the imminent danger has been removed, in his opinion.
Okay, we have, we already have a motion and a second.
I withdraw my motion.
Okay. Motion, second withdrawn.
Let me say this before, before we start voting.
Councilman Alexander, we're not voting on anything yet. We don't have a motion.
Okay, well, while we're still discussing? Okay. Mr. Jones also said in his, uh, recommendation that this building was deteriorating weekly. Weekly. That's what they said.
No, it, he says, I, I will read it to you. I'll read it to you, so we have it. "We recommend a weekly inspection to ensure the building remains free from public entrance within the established safety barrier zone, and the safety measures employed continue to remain stable and intact."
So it need be checked weekly?
Yes.
Which we have agreed to, by the way.
Checked weekly to keep it as is now. So they're assuming that it probably will stay the same from that, it sounds like.
Mayor, in accordance with our previous motion and second of several days or weeks gone by, and in compliance of that motion and second, and was unanimously approved, that we would base our decision upon a third-party engineer, along with the applicant, fulfilling the requirements of that report, which I understand have been complete, then my motion is that we remove the imminent danger status.
Does that then make it a dangerous building?
Then it is down to a dangerous building.
And the parameters on the dangerous building are...
If that's what we agreed to with these people, you dance.
Are there parameters on the dangerous buildings of 100...
Well, typically, when you ha- it, it changes it a little bit. Typically, when you have a dangerous building, you will give a certain amount of time. It's not specified within the code. You give a certain amount of time to have the dangerous building status removed, to have it either repaired or demolished.
Okay, so I, I think it would be proper to having that, to address that in that motion. I don't care what it is. So I think it would be appropriate to address the timeframe related to the dangerous building in that motion, or do you wanna see if this passes and do that?
Let's just see if this passes.
So a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this?
Couple of questions, ladies gentlemen. Have you got any estimates on how much it's gonna cost to put the rebar and a field, concrete field in them block walls?
Um, no, we've asked them to go back and take a look at some field numbers that they threw at me, so they would firm that up. Uh, he assured me that, uh, the numbers we were talking to would probably come down. They are, um, I thought was very, very reasonable for the amount of work that they've gotta do. They've got to work only from the outside. They can't get inside that building. We wouldn't allow that anyway. And, um, there'd be some blocks gonna be taken down, some new blocks gonna be put in place, rebar in every, not in every cell, but about every third cell. All the cells will be filled with a special kind of grout. That will hopefully go all the way to the bottom. It doesn't have to. And then a new, uh, structural bond beam will be wrapped around the top of the thing to tie it all together. So you've got four walls there, that's basically a freestanding structure. It sa- it stands on its own. You don't need any other reinforcing in it. And that will then allow us to go inside the building and do the demolition stuff without having to worry about the safety of the workers in there with the walls, that, that, the block that could fall on them inside and stuff.
I understand. It's not my first earlier with this kind of stuff. The other thing, have you ever executed a contract to purchase this property yet?
Uh, no, we haven't. We don't need to. We're working under the owner's ownership of it. Mr. Uh, Mr. Smith is, uh, with us 100 percent on everything that we're doing. So we're speaking on his behalf.
If I could add one thing, um, go ahead and vote on your motion, but our, our ordinance does require that there be a time specified in order to have it repaired, vacated, demolished.
We can still do that in the form of a second motion, though. So we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Okay, this motion is to remove the imminent danger and classify this building instead as a dangerous building. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, I wanna have a, um, roll call vote, please, Ms. Kettrel.
Vice Mayor Overton? Mr. Alexander?
No.
Mr. Camp?
Yes.
Mr. Fennell?
Yes.
Mr. Hayes? Ms. Love?
Yes.
Mr. Mayberry?
Yes.
Five yeses and two noes, it passes.
Thank you, it does pass. So now we entertain a motion that sets the number of days that would give them time to restore or, to repair or demolish, not necessarily restore, repair or demolish.
Just to reiterate to the public and everybody else, Susan, that did, that last vote, put us in compliance, in complying with our original request of these gentlemen, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so we're back to even. We have not reneged on anything. We've said we would and would not do at this point, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. It's still a bad building. It's still just as dangerous today as it was yesterday. It's still just as dangerous, I would suspect, as it was thirty... Folks, in forty-five days, you need to get some kind of bracing or something on those four walls. The ceiling is gone.
We've got all the braces up.
You, you've got it inside and outside, right?
No, you can't go inside the building.
Well, I mean, you got...
We've got the outside, it won't fall out. We've got the outside braced.
So what are we asking them to do?
We did exactly what they wanted us to.
You, you know, my motion, and I was trying to word it in a way that, that, um, uh, Mr. Jones was saying more or less one thing, and our building official Chuck was saying something else. I was trying to word it such that we would put Chuck's mind at ease. That's what, the only thing I was trying to do.
In my view, what we have done as far as removing the imminent danger is we've removed the imminent danger from people walking around the building. Now we need to remove the danger from people going inside of the building. And that's what needs to happen next. And I can't tell you how to do it, but, but it's gotta get there. And, you know, doing the, the, the concrete and rebar...
Yeah, well, Mayor, Mayor, the building is locked. They can't get in it unless they climb up on top and go down in it.
There's windows, there, I mean, people get in things?
They'd have, they can't get in...
Wow.
Okay. But what, what is killing us on this project? We would've been way ahead now, with all these time limits, like on this 501(c)(3). It takes so long to do it. We have no control over that. That's like this historical...
501(c)(3) does, can be done very quickly.
Okay.
Getting the IRS charitable exemption is what takes a long period of time.
We have that.
But once you're incorporated, you can actually start collecting funds.
I think money's the catalyst to this.
Okay. And this historical, we have to get it on there, because if you don't, it's my understanding you have to go by the current building codes. Is that not right? That's correct. So we can't touch that building until we get it on a historical. If we had the money today and owned it and walked down there, we can't touch it.
Would you explain that, Chuck? 'Cause I don't know where that's come from. That's something great to me.
If, if they're, if they're able to land a historic designation on that building, I don't think a city designation works, but a state designation or, uh, but then they can use the building codes when that building was built.
I thought that the designation was any building over a certain number of years.
As I said earlier, and I don't wanna dispute anybody, I don't think they'll ever get a historical on that building, because it's its third site, and it's not very old. But if they, uh, they get one, then they can go back to the original date of the building, use those building codes. That's why they go after a historical designation.
Well, that makes sense.
One thing while I'm here, I'm gonna point to the picture I gave you today. Look at, that's the exterior wall. Photograph I gave you was taken this afternoon, and that's the exterior wall.
But, I mean, you know, our historic square has, um, it's on the national register, and I, I guess as a district, it does have a designation, but that doesn't mean they don't comply with current codes. Right? Wow, there's way too many conversations going on. I'm getting, I, I, we'll talk about that later.
Well, I, real quick, I'll explain this. There's several different code books, there's an existing building code. Okay, there's a, there's a, uh, historical designation code that we have to abide by, and there's a new building code. However, no matter what they do with this building, it does not change the, the problem it has of sitting in a floodway. It's not gonna affect that whatsoever if it's dangerous, non-dangerous, historical or what, if he's gonna rebuild it. He's still got, uh, several things that they will have to work to, to get to that point. Uh, that's just hoops they gotta jump through, you know?
I got it, I, I...
All right, I have a motion? Coming forward, I feel it?
I'm gonna make a motion that we, that, I'm gonna make a motion that we allow sixty days to see the progress of the building, 'cause, you know, at that time, we can always come back and say, okay, we're gonna extend it, 'cause we've done that before. But I'm gonna say sixty days.
Motion, my Councilman Hayes? Second, my Councilman Camp. Any discussion on the sixty days?
It's still a dangerous building.
See, see, that's the problem...
Okay, we're, we're in, we're in...
We can't talk right now.
Process of voting on something. Is there any discussion by this council on this?
I, I just don't know what we're asking them to do in sixty days.
We wanna, we just wanna see some progress.
Just some progress on safety?
I mean, he might have the historical designation, he might have all that, he might be, have a building permit. You don't know what likely happened in sixty days. I hope.
Can I ask a question? Is it sixty days for them to come and report back to this council on the progress that has been made?
Yeah, just like a regular dangerous building.
You're asking them to come back in sixty days.
People have come back, and we've extended it for them before, so we might do that again.
But the intent of the sixty days is that they come back demonstrating great progress. Have a motion by Councilman Hayes?
Okay.
Motion by Councilman Hayes?
That's it.
Oh, and second by Councilman Camp. Any further discussion? All in favor of extending, or giving the dangerous building sixty days for progress to be made? Please say aye. Opposed, say no.
No.
Have one no by Councilman Alexander? Are there any other negative votes? Okay. Does pass six to one. With that, we conclude the regular agenda. We move now to other business.
We would've been way along on this project if it hadn't been for the, the time limit like on this historical. See, you weren't, you weren't aware, you thought we could go ahead and be doing things to the building? We can't.
Well, I mean, you could have from a different perspective. You're, you're choosing this route to go for...
The historical.
You're choosing the route that you're going on. Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we move now to other business? Is any of this council have any other business to come forward? Gentlemen, do you have other business?
She called y'all out.
You'd have forgotten by now, absolutely. Okay, we will say there is no other business this evening. We will move to public recognition on non-aging-related items. Ask that anyone that has an item they'd like to address this evening to come forward, introduce themselves, give us your address, and speak to your concern.
Hi there, I'm Aaron Thomas. I live at 990 South Water Avenue. I just wanted to take an opportunity to introduce myself to the citizens of Gallatin and ask for their support on November the sixth. Thank you for your time.
And you are running for, you might want to mention?
Uh, council at large.
Thought that'd help you out there, Mr. Thomas. Thank you so much.
The most prestigious position up there.
Anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition on non-aging-related items? The department heads look particularly appreciative.
You won't do that, Jimmy. You won't gotta go each separate...
Mr. DeBoer.
My name is Joe DeBoer, and I live at 10007 Hart Street here in Gallatin, Tennessee. Three items that I'd like to bring up tonight. Number one, uh, the mayor had a nice, uh, give-a-show projector time last night, and I've, I've got a couple of things I'd like to bring to fore. Number one, in the last calendar year, uh, not calendar year, but, uh, business year, from, uh, Ju- July to July, we have not put one iota of money... we have not put one iota of money into our widening of streets from, from regular funds. And that concerns me. We need to have a little bit of our money go into widening and, and paving of our streets. Now, the question I have for, for our illustrious engineering department, who came out with a list of, of streets that they're gonna repave, in particular, down there in a little section that we had a little problem with a few years back, where we had a trash truck get, get tangled up with a car. Are you gonna be putting any more width on the, on the streets, Mr.? You're not gonna go any wider? You're gonna have to come up a little bit wider. Our seventeen-feet streets will not cut it, period. Will not cut it. You're gonna have to start widening these streets. And until you do so, we are definitely at liable. And this is the time of year where we're doing our, uh, check out for what we've done good, what we have done, and I'll, I'll give kudos to the mayor and her work. But this is one iota of things that we have not done one darn thing about in this last year. Now, I have good news. You should have, according to Mr. Stewart's building group, all the building permits that we've had. There should be money available soon for that. You know that new build is not gonna have to have any work done on their streets and their neighborhoods when you accept like on a, on that Cairo deal tonight. You're not gonna have to go in there and redo any of those. Now, we have had problems in the past, and Mr. Mayberry is keenly aware of us not being able to get money out of people that supposedly put in a, a building, building in, in an area and didn't have enough money in their bond for fixing the streets. And we had to pick up the tab a few years back. We don't have that now. We need to make sure that we are widening our streets. And then the next thing, Mayor, everybody loves this one. They have it in Nashville for the sidewalks. And I would point you in the direction of yonder, and I'm pointing toward Mr. Alexander's neighborhood over there. They desperately need a lot of work in that neighborhood. And I would point you in that direction. All right, second, second issue is, I got some money here. Got a check for you. Mayor likes money. Gonna make sure she has her money. I have a check here for my water fee for the year. And I'm gonna give it to the lady over here, and we shall say, keep, keep Ketchel. You know what, you know what to do with that, you know what to do with money. So that my water fee is, is paid for for the year. And the reason why I did that is this. According to your program is you're gonna have that fee to take care of the staff and people that are supposedly working on that fee. Y'all backed off this thing until, till the first of the year. You need the money right now to pay those salaries. And I feel like that sometimes we need to show a little responsibility to make sure that certain things happen in the city. Not anything against you, Mayor, because you didn't wanna have, have anything go awry before election time. You guys don't wanna have that before election time. I'll pick on you a little bit, but we still have...
Staff is in place, Mr. DeBord, thank you.
Yeah, we, we understand. And we also understand that a lot of our businesses, we wanna take care of them because of the fact that...
Time is way up.
No, 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 it, no.
It is, yes.
Well, whatever, anyway.
Thank you.
You gonna cut me off? All right. We understand about taking care of our customers in that we have businesses here that set up their budgets on a yearly basis, and it goes calendar year versus our business here. We understand that. But we still need to be, make sure that these funds are available so we can get these things done. And guess what happens? It helps our, it helps our, uh, tax base because it makes our, our properties worth more when you don't have to worry about a flood like a little lady down on Duncan Street did a few years back, where they put in some water retention things down there. So, we're all for that, but we gotta have, make sure we have the funds. So, y'all have a great evening.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak?
I got one quick thing. I have to say a huge thank you to the Kiwanis Club for their generous donation yesterday.
Absolutely. Ten thousand dollars they donated yesterday to the Miracle Complex. And thank you, Vice Mayor Overton, that should've been mentioned at the first of the meeting by me, so... I think they also challenged all the other, the Kiwanis Club joined, challenged all the other civic clubs and organizations to also donate heartily. And they only have sixteen members in that club, so that's certainly commendable. Sixteen members. Okay, with that, anyone else wishing to speak under public recognition? Anyone else from this council be, wishing to be recognized? Okay, thank you. Motion to adjourn by Vice Mayor Overton, second by Councilwoman Love. All in favor, please say aye. Everyone have a lovely evening.